Good? You guys all right?
Yeah.
That's what we need. We just want to go bathroom, I think. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions. United States of America and the Republic of the United States of America, on my nation, under God, indivisible, liberating and reconciling all our problems.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our service men and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Bobby Wintermantle. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
She's coming in right now.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Present. Here. Attorney General Wright, will you give us an update and a reminder on our council rules, please?
Yes, for the public, the agenda of the Scranton City Council meeting has been placed out on the table in the hallway for those who would like that. Also, I would just remind members of the citizenship that on the back are the guidelines for citizen participation at the Scranton City Council meetings. Please refresh your memory with regard to those in addressing council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. There'll be a motion this evening to suspend the rules and move items seven C and five, or five C and five D to seventh order for a final vote. Five C is Harb's denial of the certificate of appointmentist for the demolition of the carriage house at 336 Moyer Court. University wants to go ahead with this project and it would require council to suspend the rules and to vote so the university can go ahead with demolition. Five D is a cooperation agreement between the city of Scranton and Scranton tomorrow to assist with downtown revitalization. Anyone who would like to speak on either of these pieces of legislation may do so in fourth order during citizens' participation. Spencer, minutes?
Third order, three A. Overtime report for all departments as provided by the city controller received April 25th, 2024, per year to date.
Are there any comments on any of the third-party order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Mr. President, on Friday, May 10th, there will be a dedication for the Oakmont Park, which was just completed up on the east mountain. That'll happen at 2:00 PM. There'll be a ribbon cutting. So we're excited about another park getting completed for the residents of our city. So that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else?
I have a quick one. So the Lutheran Academy of Scranton, which is on 1546 Monty Avenue, is having a taco and treats fundraiser. So if anybody's looking for fun and a delicious way to support Christian education, look no further than our upcoming taco and treats fundraiser. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Holottis. Do we have this one?
Joan Holottis, Scranton. I was very interested to learn about the shooting on the 1700 block of Pittston Avenue yesterday morning. Was very surprised that the newspaper has yet to cover it. It'll be in tomorrow's edition, I think. At any rate, that's the fourth homicide in Scranton this year, okay, which is kind of remarkable because I can remember years when there weren't any homicides. One a month is really surprising and the uptick in gang activity. Now, I keep thinking back on a couple, a couple months ago when some of the backup documents for city council, and there was a mention of the police department being at 80% manning. And, you know, and I'm thinking, that doesn't sound very good if that's still the issue now. Maybe we've recruited some, maybe classes have graduated and we're coming up too par. But I would recommend that when you start having your budget discussions for 2025 and you have the various department heads come in for caucuses, that you sit down and ask the chief of police the hard questions. Does the budget provide him sufficient manning? Because this, if this trend continues, we're going to be hurting. And I fully understand that if you have to increase the number of police officers, that's adding money to the budget. But the priority is public safety and as well as the safety of our police department officers. So if this trend continues, I think you need to be asking those hard questions. I don't like this. This makes me feel very unsafe. I've never seen this in Scranton before in all my life. And it's just not good. We would have had more than four had Kyle Gil Martin not survived his shooting. It would have been five. So please, please think about that. Whatever we can do to increase the posture of the police department and the safety of the citizens, I think be worth every penny. If you want to save money on the budget, let's get rid of fraud, waste, and abuse. That'll do it. The union contracts firefighters, 291 days since the arbitrator signed off on it. I'm sorry, 391 days and the police, 276. So I'll be looking in the next few weeks to get a response to my right-to-know request for copies of those union contracts or hopefully an explanation why they don't exist. And after that, I'm going to start asking, you know, what have they been paying since April 4th, 2023 for the firefighters' contract and since July 28th, 2023 for the police, since that's when the arbitrator signed off on his decision? Yesterday, I went to the meeting of the city's environmental advisory council. It's only once every three or four months. The next one's on July 29th. I was the only person there from the general public, but that's going to be a very important board for this city. The issues they're going to be looking at and addressing are storm water management, the walkability study, and all the upgrades to the downtown and the effect on the environment, climate change, and let's not forget Pennsylvania American Water's contribution of silt to the Lackawanna River. So people who are, you know, concerned about these issues, July 29th, 4:00 PM, the governor's room. And finally, the pocket park looks pretty, right across the street, catty corner from the cathedral, beautiful green grass, tulips and daffodils, or whatever you call those flowers. There are no benches. Are we getting benches for that? And are we going to have a grand opening? And can you give us some feedback on that? Because spring has sprung. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Is Mark Cordello?
Joan, we're going to be passing legislation this evening for Scranton tomorrow, applying for some grant to pay for benches for that park.
Mark Cordello?
Good evening. Mark Cordello. I actually am the new director for Community Relations Lackawanna County. And the reason why I'm here is just to introduce myself, say hello, see how we can actually work together, representing the commissioners of Lackawanna County, to, again, be a sounding board and see how we can help with any needs, opportunities, objections that you might have that we may be, work together and overcome. Also, though, I'd like to share with everybody some opportunities that are going on in Lackawanna County. If I may present?
Yes.
Okay. For example, anyone knows somebody who is a certified lifeguard? The four parks are looking for lifeguards. Starting salary is at $18 and supervisor pay is $21.50. And I'll leave these, I did talk to, thank you, Mr. Vandenberg, we'll get these into your hands and post it and things like that. The Electric City Trolley Museum is presenting Star Wars Day, Saturday, May 4th. Hence, may the force be with you. Mother's Day is coming. Potted Plant Cell is going to be on May 11th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Artworks Gallery Studio, 236 Penn Avenue. There'll be a variety of sizes. People can, can take advantage of those wonderful things. In Dixon City, Bernard Samowski Day in the Park is going to be happening on May 11th. So that's a great event. Saturday, May 18th, Northeast Pennsylvania's Armed Forces Day Parade is going to be held here in downtown. There's also sponsorship opportunities, any businesses and local people want to get involved with that, it's a great opportunity there. All right. It's, as I said, spring has sprung. The Trolley Museum Take Me Out to the Ballpark has commenced. So if anybody's interested in going to see that. The Arts Engagement, also 2024 Back to School Arts Project, School Spirit, Decorating a Snowplow. Okay, so schools will have an opportunity to decorate a snowplow and there's wonderful opportunities for them to, to win. It's all in this packet here. Amateur Radio Club, The Windmill, W3LTR Field Day is going to be happening at the parks on June 22nd and Sunday, June 23rd. Information is all on here. Wonderful organization here, Bee's Backyard Special Needs Summer Camp is going to be taking place starting the week of July 21st and pretty much through the month of August. And all that information is on here. It's a special needs plant. Reactivating, bringing back the Lackawanna County Amateur Golf Tournament is going to be held on Sunday, July 7th, at Pine Hills Country Club. So there's going to be adult version and there's also going to be a youth version of this as well. So two separate competitions, obviously, with regards to age groups. On Friday, July 26th and Saturday the 27th of July, the three-on-three basketball tournament is going to be held on Wyoming Avenue. So it's going to be a wonderful event coming back again. There are, again, sponsorship opportunities if anybody wants to get involved. Proceeds will go to Coaches vs. Cancer Organization. Great organization to be a part of. Last but not least, all right. We dare you to take on the recycling challenge. We have a one-year to gather 1,000 pounds of plastic. So this is something the county is doing, but also cities, municipalities can also take a part of this and do this. The, if you are able to achieve over 1,000 pounds, the company, Trex, will provide a free bench, plastic, made out of plastic. So there's a reward there. I thank you for your time.
Mark, real quick.
Yes, please.
The lifeguard situation. Last year, I believe, that the county provided the certification training and paid for it for prospective applicants. Is that?
I'll have to check on that detail.
Okay.
But I'll get back with you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tomorrow for that, for sure. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We're doing it, too. Please, if they pass, I'll have to find out. I'll ask our new director.
That wasn't clear last year.
No. Les Spindler?
May I approach?
Yes.
Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Before I speak about what I passed out, I just want to reiterate something. That the council many, many years ago tried to silence us and we brought in the ACLU because the United States Constitution supersedes any rules of council. So we could get up here and say more or less anything. And we brought the ACLU and they tried to silence us years ago and they squashed that right away. Okay, now, what I handed out was a letter I spoke about last week that I got from Burkheimer. And a threatening letter. So I took it to my accountant and what you see on the second page is a letter that he sent to Burkheimer saying that somebody that owns a rental, a rental property is not subject to payroll preparation tax. I'm not writing a payroll. I have a rental property. And right now, I'm not even collecting rent from it because my daughter lives there. But they said anybody that has a rental property is not subject to payroll preparation taxes. So you people passed legislation, you don't even know what you passed. And a Burkheimer doesn't know what they're doing because they even have my wife's maiden name down on the letter. She hasn't used her maiden name in over 34 years since we're married. And the last page is another letter that I got yesterday for 2023, after my accountant emailed a letter to them that there's people that have rental properties don't pay, run payroll preparation tax. We don't have people working for us. We don't make a payroll. It's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard of. Burkheimer doesn't know what the heck they're doing. And you people passed this legislation. Three of you know who you are. And you better get it together because all you're doing is sticking it to the taxpayers. You want us to pay more taxes and more taxes. We're taxed beyond belief, especially people like myself that's retired and on a fixed income. We can't take anymore. And when you, when you pass legislation, know what you're passing. Because like I said, all you're doing is sticking it to the taxpayers. We should not be getting letters like this. And my accountant said they got many other people coming in complaining. And I'm sure they're not the only accountant people that are dealing with this. And, and I said today, when I went over, I said, this is harassment. And they said, yeah, it is. So I'm going to talk to an attorney that deals with stuff like this. And if they tell me I have a case, I'm going to sue the three of you to pass this legislation and I'm going to sue Burkheimer. So you better start looking for an attorney.
Derek Rains?
Derek Rains, 1919 Monroe Avenue, Scranton. Lived here since January of 1988. During that time, I've had the same problem for years and years. I've had stories done by media. David DeCosmo came out, did a great story about the condoms and the feces and all the garbage that just floats down our street. But it just really has reached the point where it's so bad now. My dirt coming in and out of my house is just pathetic. When, before we left today, it was, it was just completely, Jill, you can show them those pictures if you want to see the pictures of the foot of water in front of the driveway, which we've complained about time and time again. I know Mr. Petroface, who I will call a liar, did not do any of the stuff he said he would do. The people that worked with him did not do any of the stuff that they said they would do. They said they would get those holes patched on the corners. The bus stop, it still has a big hole in it. That's got to be three years I've talked about that. No chance to get that stuff taken care of. And I just don't understand why this city cannot do that. But I'm complaining about my driveway, but what about this walkway here? This, all these people who work here have to realize how bad these roads are. And it's just appalling. I can't see how much time I have left.
Three minutes.
So Jill, can you hand me that sign?
Oh, yeah.
My wife's hiding it from me. So I'm going to, I'm going to hold it up so everybody can see it. Hopefully, it's facing the right way. How about the gentleman who lost his son? Is he here?
Right here.
I'm bringing this just for you, buddy. I want you to take this home and put it in front of your house. So Jill, you can take this up to them. My, when I started the Hill Neighborhood Association, I didn't start it, but one of the things that, first things I did was a neighborhood crime watch. And we had a man by the name of Eddie Fazano, who was the best DPW worker you guys ever had. He had, if you wanted to get rid of stuff, he had all these different containers. You had a water heater you had to get rid of. You could take it down and put it there. And they have all of that stuff that was there. And now our city doesn't care about that stuff. They don't care how we get rid of it. So people just throw it in the alley. And who gets to pick it up? All of us. And it just, it's all, it's just awful. But the city needs to start getting people who follow through with, with everything that goes with it. But back to my problem now, the water was so deep today, it's just appalling that I cannot drive my chair down my driveway because the incompetent engineers for the city paved and paved and paved and they never milled the road to make the road level. It's just horrible. And it's entirely caused by incompetence of the employees who inspected it and did all of that. The water company, Dr. Jessica, she's talked to the water company. They're going to take care of all this stuff. The water company, they're still working on Myrtle Street. They, they've had so many water leaks on Myrtle Street now. I don't know what is going to happen with all of those things. But now, we, we got rid of the storm grades. So all that water now comes up into my driveway, up into my, basically into my house. And it, it's just appalling that a city this size cannot do something like that. I think if I worked in this building and I had friends come here and they had to drive through this horrible alley, I would truly be ashamed that we have a Department of Public Works that allows things like that to happen here. It's, it's just appalling. What's that, Joe? Oh, anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions about how to get a Hill Neighborhood Association or a Neighborhood Association going? Because we did it for years and years with Eddie Fazano. And we got all that garbage out and it didn't cost us anything. Everything was gone. And it's too bad we can't get Eddie Fazano to come back.
Thank you.
Mr. Rains, just to give you an update, I believe an email went to you recently regarding your block. Steve Osolinski, the senior superintendent of field operations with the Pennsylvania American Water Company, advised that he was able to secure funding to move the project forward in front of your house. He advised that the water company is presently working on the bid. They hope to start construction in May, which tomorrow's May. He reiterated that he will, there will be a joint project with city DPW related to the contour of the road and that Steve Teeman with DPW have been updated accordingly. Mr. Osolinski and his team will keep counsel and the city informed on the progress. So that's an update, okay?
Well, that would just be wonderful. Thank you so much. Then congratulations, Dr. Jessica.
Thank you.
Sherry Crowley?
Hi, do you guys mind if I approach to give you guys some paperwork from the shelter? Hello, I'm Sherry Crowley. I work for Griffin Pond Animal Shelter. I'm the development director. We're at 967 Griffin Pond Road in South Abington Township. I'm coming to you today to raise awareness of some issues that are going on in the city of Scranton with animals. In 2022, we took in 411 animals and two of those animals were reclaimed, went back to their owners. In 2023, we took in 527 animals and two of those animals were reclaimed by their owners. So far, in 2024, we've taken in 218 animals. Just last week, we took in 10 dogs in one week from the city of Scranton. Just last week, we took in 10 dogs in one week from the city of Scranton. 56 of those animals were reclaimed by their owners, but we call those repeat offenders. It's the same animal that, you know, is running loose, coming back to the shelter, running loose, coming back to the shelter. We just had an incident last week where a lady that lives in the city of Scranton dumped two mastiffs in newt ransom. So we have, we have an overpopulation of animals problem in this area, and we need your help. We're seeing a surge in animal neglect, which is deeply distressing. Hoarding cases, which I'm sure you guys were aware of, the hoarding case a couple of months ago on Market Street. There were 40-some-odd cats and eight, six or eight pugs that we took in. At the shelter also, we take care of 250 animals a day. It used to be only 200 animals daily. Now we're up to 250 animals that are residing in the shelter. And that, that's not animals like living in a kennel. That's animals like living in an office, in a restroom, in a dish room, in the community room. Like, there's just no more space, you know, at all at the shelter. It also directly affects the workload of Scranton Animal Control because if we don't have available space and they have a situation, we can't take in any more animals. You could, you could build another shelter tomorrow, and that shelter would be full in two weeks, absolutely full in two weeks. We're seeing more people breeding in the city of Scranton, breeding animals. And we're asking that possibly that you guys do a pause in breeding in the city of Scranton, or if you're going to allow breeding, that anybody that breeds an animal has to obtain a kennel license. We have dogs, you know, like literally just running around the streets. And we really need your help. We're seeing people that live in low-income housing that are only allowed one animal, and they end up with five, and then they call us because they're in trouble with management. Or, you know, they, their cat had a litter of kittens, so we're taking in, you know, another litter of kittens. And are you guys aware that we're losing a low-cost spay-and-neuter clinic, mobile clinic here in the city of Scranton? That goes away in June. So then, we don't, you know, we don't have a low-cost spay-and-neuter clinic. I did speak to Marty Flynn, and Marty Flynn's going to look into some possibly like grant situation to maybe attract some veterinarians for this area. I went to Humane Day yesterday in Harrisburg, and I was able to sit down and speak with him for about 30 minutes. So maybe that'll be something. City council can play a crucial role in addressing these issues. You consider writing ordinance for the city of Scranton, prohibiting breeding with animals within the city of Scranton. If you're going to allow breeding with animals, obtain a kennel license. Maybe you could mandate that animals be spayed and neutered in the city of Scranton, and that they be microchipped so that way we're not overcrowded and we could possibly get animals back to their original owners. Maybe some education in the city of Scranton. If you need my help, I'm available. We're just, we're at our wits' end. And I'm sure your Scranton Animal Control officers are too. It's just, it's really, really out of hand. Okay, do you guys have any questions? The pictures that I gave you, those are three dogs that came in in the last few months from the city of Scranton, from neglect cases. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Raymond Rodriguez? Raymond? Raymond Rodriguez?
That's me. My hearing aids are acting up. I'm here in support of Mr. Derek. He's my neighbor. And I did a GPS search, and I'm like six minutes away from President Biden's house. So I went there to compare it with our houses. And I didn't see any water accumulated there when it rains. And that's why I'm here to support him. I think it's a great city. I left my house in Florida to move up here, so that speaks for itself. And what's happening is, I took some pictures of it. I don't know if I, I didn't, this is my first time here, so I don't know if I could present it and show it to anybody here. I sent pictures of his house also, so that he would have something to show. Because as they say, a picture is worth a thousand words. I'm an ex-veteran Marine, and I have a handicap sign put up for my house. So I won't have to walk that much. And when I get all this rain accumulated, the birds think it's a bathhouse there, and they come and swim in it and do everything in that water that piled up. And one of the worst things that happens is that when we come home with the groceries, and I got the picture here, no matter which door of my car, if something falls out of the car, it falls in that water, and that's one of the... It's not as serious as shootings and all of that, but it is, it's not a good thing. You know, when you have your food fall in the water there, that dirty water that accumulates. I'm not here, I know you've got a lot on your plate. I'm not here to complain. I'm here to contribute to a solution. I'm here to help you because this is my city now, okay? So I go around, I drive a lot, and I see the good and the bad, just like every other city. And I want to make the city that I'm going to live the rest of my life in, you know, look as nice as possible and contribute to it. So my way of dealing with a big mountain of problems is to tackle one sand, grain of sand at a time. What I mean by that, I know you have a lot on your plate. And from what Derek told me, you know, he's been having this situation for at least two years now. And it's serious enough for us because as you can see, he's in a wheelchair, and he's got to get on the bus that takes him to his appointments and all of that. So, you know, the tires get wet, everything. My shoes are wet right now. You won't believe it because I came home with groceries, and it was raining. So that's how bad it is, you know, plus what I mentioned before. So going back to the topic of not coming here to complain, but to contribute and to help and to improve Scranton. If you don't have the time for these minor things, then by all means, if you were to give me or us the authority to make a hole in there, make a drain so the water has somewhere to go instead of waiting for the sun to come out and dry it out and the birds to drink it, I would gladly do so. And, you know, because every time kids go by, they're going to school, cars splash the water, the works. So that's, this is my first time. Just want to see if somehow, you know, I could get some kind of permission. I'll make sure there's no wires, no, nothing that I drill a hole in there that will break or cause a shortage in the city or whatever. But I'll do it because, you know, you know what the Marine Corps are about. We take care of business. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome to see the pictures I took if you'd like.
No, I believe you, but we are not really in a position to allow you to drill holes in the street or anything like that. Perhaps go on the city's website and contact our DPW. Just send them an email and get an opinion from them. But as a council, we cannot authorize anyone to put a hole in the street.
And hopefully, it sounds like we have a solution with Pennsylvania American Water, combination of PAWC and DPW. It's supposed to be addressed within the next couple of weeks. So hopefully, we can get that resolved for both of you and the rest of your neighbors. Thank you for coming this evening.
Would be very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all for the sign and sheet. Anyone else wish to address council?
Sorry. I like to sing a lot and stuff like that. But yeah, my name is Zan Marquis. I'm a local activist slash musician. And I came here last year to speak about the homeless. But right now, what I want to speak about is pretty much the air pollution in the city. Like, the air is so polluted to the point to where it's though like when you're walking outside, like you could barely breathe. And I think, I think that has to do with, you know, like the littering. The littering that goes on in the city, I have a solution for that. And the solution that I have is maybe we could possibly, we could possibly like raise up the fees of the fines. I don't know how much the fines are, but we could raise the fees of the fines to, to, to the point to where it's though these people could second-guess littering, excuse me. I haven't, I haven't public spoken in a minute, so I'm kind of nervous. But these people could public, excuse me, these people could second-guess littering. So we have to raise up the fees and the fines. I don't know how much the fines are. Does anyone know?
300, I believe.
Not offhand.
How much, how much is the fine?
I think it's 300.
How much is the fine for littering is what I'm asking.
300, I believe.
How much?
300, it used to be.
300? So why don't we raise it up to like a little, a few more hundred? You know what I'm saying? Make the people second-guess because I believe in like being a little bit firm. You know what I'm saying? That'd make the people, that'd make the people stop littering. So what do you, what do you guys think? Like, when it comes to, when it comes to littering and things of that nature?
Some of it might be due to enforcement issues as opposed to the amount of the fine.
Enforce the laws?
It might need to be better enforced.
I mean, but that doesn't, that doesn't really stop anything. That doesn't change anything. You know what I'm saying? So like, you could, you can enforce the law, but the city is dirty as ever. You know what I'm saying? So what I'm saying is like, raise up the fees of the fines, and that'd make somebody second-guess throwing anything on the ground. Let's say if you raised the fines up to like $900 or something like that. Ain't nobody going to want to throw something on the ground if you got paid $900. You can't afford that. Now, if you can't afford it and you don't pay the fine, then you have to go to jail. Do you really want to go to jail for littering in the city? I mean, it's an honest question. It's something that people should really think about. That's what I think. So what do you guys think about? Like, what do you guys think? What is your opinion?
Well, if it's not being enforced at, say, 300, and that's just a number that I thought I remembered. If it's not being enforced at 300, it's not going to be enforced at 900. I believe that people should pick up their own garbage and not litter. That's where it should start.
That's true. That's true. But how do we get them to do that? So what do we do? How do we get them to do that? We could do, I mean, we could do, we could do recycling. We could do recycling. We could get people to do community service or something like that. But that's hard to like get, that's hard to organize the community in that way. You know what I'm saying? So I'm just figuring this out as I go, you know? I really don't know. But I really, I really felt like doing that with the fines was a good idea. I really did. You know what I'm saying? To raise up the fines. I don't see nothing wrong with that. Because any otherwise, if you think about it, any otherwise, why do we have, why do we have fines?
Please, go back to the microphone.
Okay, why do we have fines, right? If you're saying that doesn't matter. We have to, okay, we have, there's still laws. So what is the, what is the, what is the fines there for anyway? If that doesn't make a difference, are you understanding what I'm saying? Because I'm looking at this guy, he looks kind of...
Yes, I understand what you're saying. I clearly understand.
I think what we said is it needs to be enforced. So perhaps we need to look at our enforcement of the litter laws before we go changing the fines. So maybe if we start actually fin... I'd be interested in knowing, and maybe we could check with the city. Find out how many fines we've had recently for people who have littered.
People don't care. That's the thing.
Well, you just asked a question. I'm answering it. So I'd like to find out how many fines have been issued. And from there, then I'd be willing to say, okay, obviously, it's not working. We either need to raise the fine or we need to start enforcing it more. Thank you.
All right, so you want to start, you want to start where? Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I said, I want to look into finding out through our police, law enforcement, find out how many fines have been issued for littering and see where we're at.
Are they even giving out fines for the littering?
Exactly. I want to see if it's being enforced.
So what happens, what happens if they're not? What are you going to do about it?
Well, then I think it's time for us to meet with the city police and find out why that's not being enforced.
Got you.
And we can confirm the correct amount for the fines. But I think $300, if that is the case, that that's already a pretty hefty fine. So if that's not dissuading people...
People don't even like, people don't even give out fines for littering anymore. Like, why is the city so dirty?
Okay, sir, thank you. Thank you.
Tom Coyne, Menucha, AFG Media. Good evening. Let me take you back to last Wednesday. On entering the building, I noticed bags of shredded paper put for pickup in a blue recycling can. The shredded papers were on top of five red recycle totes, one marked HR, and a copy paper box. I thought nothing of it when it's this counseling session. On leaving after a brief conversation with other attendees in Dick's Court, I was once again drawn to an uncovered box that had shred 2033 on its side. After others departed, I went up and I looked over the uncovered edge of the box. It contained employee files. These were not old, as I verified. The date on the front of the entry was from 2023. I'm well aware that Scranton has a retention, record retention policy of three years, but this was not even a year old. And worse, the entire copy paper box contained employees and other sensitive files. I was not sure what to do. First, I tried to contact DPW to verify or get an emergency pickup, dialed DPW dispatch and selected one, and it went right to no one's home. After, I did that three or four times with no response. I managed to catch a council member who stopped, and they tried to make a few phone calls, but got the same no answer. This was an administrative issue and not a legislative one, and they went off. For the next hour and a half, I pondered what was the best action to take as city hall was closed. I stopped one of the firemen. They said DPW would be around in the morning to pick them up. Not wanting to leave files because of the personal information inside, I drove to the Scranton Police Department and asked for a car so that they could take possession until proper disposal could be done. The car arrived, asked how I knew if the files were sensitive, and I explained, and he took a look over the top of the box with his flashlight. After a brief period, he said, well, they were disposed of. I could take them. As it is obviously, I'm not looking, as obviously, since I went to the police, was not looking to use them for identity theft. He tried DPW, and after 20 minutes, I guess a police supervisor got back to him. It was decided, after I had a glance into the boxes, that we took the unshredded HR files and put them back into city hall as the police officer opened the door. We took five totes and one two-third full blue recycle container back inside the building. So we have four scenarios, all bad. HR can't tell shred 2023 from 2033. Or they left them out inaccessible near the trash for anyone to pick up, and that's how they got out to the curb. Or they decided shredding was too labor-intensive. Or they were intentionally destroying records before the mandatory three-year period. What was inside? Employee files containing names, addresses, phone numbers, birth dates, social security numbers. They even had emergency contact numbers exposing those people and addresses on those documents. If you had a wage garnish from the city, that was in there. With no way of knowing how long they were out and who saw them, these people have a right to know that their data was breached. There were also contractors' infos, condemnation letters from licensing inspection and court files. All of this information has been exposed. I will not do anything with it. But as anyone else who may have been outside and passed for over five hours that it was exposed, we have no idea. On coming to this meeting, I was served by the city's law department. The city's law department has just admitted that I took pictures of confidential documents. I took pictures of confidential documents. These documents were left with the trash outside of city hall in the court itself. They're open season. I did not touch any of the boxes until the police officer that I went to get from the police station came up here to secure it. Now the city wants to come in and wants, from this media association, all copies of documents, paperwork, and assurances that I've deleted everything to cover their putting confidential personnel files out in the trash, unshredded. It's a shame and it's wrong. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Ray. fines. You see somebody littering, that's it. And the police officer should be able to collect it. Uh, I'd like to see some legislation to take down the Biden Street signs. Can you give me a, a, an idea how I would do legislation like that? Because it's just not right that, that we have Biden Street signs. I know it's his, you know, it's a touchy-feely thing. It's his hometown, but he, he's opened our border. He's a tru- he's ruining our country, and people have to connect the dots, and it just makes, it's just a finger in the eye to, to see that on Spruce Street. Uh, about the papers, uh, I wa- I was recently evicted from Scranton Housing Authority in the court system, and it was completely unfair. Be- because people don't understand what the court system is. They didn't even understand what law enforcement is. I hear, you know, the police are going after the homeless and everything, and, but, you know, after I, it, it almost killed me, uh, the homeless. I lost most of my property, and then I'm trying to find a place to live. I mean, I was fighting four years with, with these people because I knew that, because I, I, I took the time to learn Pennsylvania law, and then when I realized, that's completely, th- they're not going by the law. They're going by their own little process, and I'm an outsider. I don't fit into tha- that thing. So I started, you know, had to study federal law. They don't know anything about federal law. But, uh, there's no housing here. There's no housing. I got people at, at the northeastern, uh, or the neighborhood center. There's so, it's so confusing because there's a million places called neighborhood this, neighborhood that. I finally found the neighborhood place and I made it. You know, I've had a few appointments, but, uh, and I'm trying to get into Finch Tower, and I couldn't believe the sign I saw on the door of the manager of Finch Tower. It's this paper for, you have to, they have to pay a caregiver license. And I, it, all these licenses, I mean, you have to have a rental license according to the law in order to rent, but there's no rental licenses for Scranton Housing Authority. But there should be, uh, because it's in the lease that they made in nineteen ninety-six, and that's where the problem started. Scranton Housing was a great place, uh, but, but ever since then, that's, that's about the year that Judge Farrell, and, and, and the courts are, are just rubber stamps. This is HUD. But they're not HUD. They're not following the HUD rules whatsoever. And what was crazy is like, you, you need a certificate of homelessness. What? You know? And, and this is what you have to get for them to start to help you. And you, you go to Catholic Social Services and CIC for the daytime thing, and I, I even went to Keystone Missions, which is sort of an outsider thing. But there's no housing, and there has to be some responsibility to find out what's going on in Scranton Housing Authority. Who works there? What people are in there? Cause I can promise you, the building has been cleared out several times over in the time I lived there, and new people come in. And I found out that, yeah, these are the CIC workers. They're working for Matt Cartwright's office, you know, and, and then they get free housing. I'm out on the street after fighting for four years, and I get at Catholic Social Service. They're flying people in, they're busing people in, cause this is a sanctuary city. You know, it's, that's what really messes my mind with Biden Street because, uh, I mean, this is treason.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Murray Schumacher. Uh, first, I would like to know how many of the Meadowbrook, uh, in, um, yeah, Easements have been obtained. Have they all, are they ready to go to work?
All of them? I, I don't believe they have. Have we gotten an updated list, Mr. Volenberg?
No, we haven't. I spoke with attorney Boyd Hughes today, and he's moving rapidly on securing them.
We don't have a total right now. We don't have a total right now.
Could you have it next week?
I'm sorry?
Could you have it next week and, and the start for the project?
Well, give it a try.
Frank, do you know offhand how long, uh, Mr. Hughes has been contracted with the city?
Approximately two months.
Yeah, so he's been here two months. I mean, I, I can't say how much has been done at this point in time. We haven't had an update, but he's only been here two months.
Okay.
He does have all the paperwork in line, though.
Thank you, Frank.
Next, I'd like to know, why can't one of you or all of you get those contracts that Joan is talking about so that they can be available to any person in the city who would like to read those?
We are working on it, and our attorney is, um, is also working on it with the city law department.
What, what needs to be, I don't understand what needs to be worked on. I would think if a city councilperson asked for that, they would hand it over right then. What, what do you have to do to get it?
Uh, they are working on that process right now.
Who's the "they"?
I just said our attorney and our law department, the city law department.
That is terrible. Uh, would you tell me what the cost of that parket, uh, parket, yeah, pocket park at the corner of Linden and Wyoming has cost us from the beginning?
Linden and Wyoming? I, I don't believe, uh, Mr. Volenberg, do we have a contract for that, or was that a, a pure city project, or was it?
I could find that information out for Ms. Schumacher.
I think it was a combination of funding. So if you could find out what the total cost is and where the funding sources came, that'd be greatly appreciated.
I can get that tomorrow.
Yeah, and while we're talking, you're thinking about what things look like, that wall that is between the, uh, Lackawanna, on Lackawanna Avenue, between Adams Avenue and Radisson Hotel is terrible. It needs to be knocked down and redone. And it just really hurts when you pick up the paper and you see what's going to be painted on the, on the tunnel going out to Southside. Now, what is more important? A mural or that wall?
Murray, um, I just recently saw from our engineer, um, the drawings, um, and the plans that have already been developed, um, for that wall that's gonna be replaced. The one, first of all, there's the wall that kinda leads up the ramp along. Um, that's gonna be actually restored to, um, what it originally looked like. It's gonna look really nice architecturally. Um, and the other wall is also scheduled. We have funding to, uh, get that repaired as well. So, that is on the docket.
And what's the timing for that? Do you know?
Uh, I'm hoping that that's gonna begin this summer, but I'll try to get, um, Frank, if you can get a timeline on that for us?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, and would you please report what, to us next week, the number of employees who were, uh, received some kind of, uh, issue for putting out those, uh, confidential personal paperwork that Tom talked about?
What, do you wanna know who put them out?
I wanna know what, if anybody, if, if the people who put them out were...
If, if there was any repercussions?
Pardon?
If there was any repercussions or reprimands?
I still didn't get it, I'm sorry.
If there's any repercussions or reprimands, is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Yeah. I think we deserve to know that people are, have a reason to not do that again. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Virgil Argento. It's been brought to the attention of our group. There's a Case skid loader manufactured by Case, if anyone can recall. This piece of machinery may have been part of Recreations, and it may have been donated to the Rec Authority. If that's the Case, why not just give that to the DPW, and DPW can use this piece of equipment? Before anything is donated, shouldn't it, and doesn't it have to be approved by city council? If so, does anyone remember this donation? The Case skid loader? Do we know which of the many directors that may have been involved in this? Mr. Smurl, this is a case loader that you've been riding on, you frequently use up at the park. That's the one in question, sir. Can you tell us where the piece of machinery is stored and whose house it's at? Who maintains it? And if anyone is injured, who's insuring that vehicle or piece of equipment? Is the city liable for that? Are there any records for this vehicle, piece of machinery? We didn't forget about the power washer issue now, did we? It's a Case skid loader, and it's been used up at Naught Park. And Mr. Smurl, you've been a driver of it recently.
I, I've been driving it for five years.
You can answer after this. There's no secret that the police are under attack and youth violence is high. No secret to that. Businesses and citizens support and offer their help through local law enforcement and the police who are under attack daily. You would think we would all be on the same page. You would think, anyway. You would think that the nonprofits that are concerned with youth would also agree and contribute in a positive way to the law enforcement, to our community. Well, this particular organization has contributed. They had made a request that the police are not welcome on this particular high profer- profile, neighborhood corner, property. There's a high visible intersection. That's okay. It's their property. Let's start auditing the 501Cs. It's sad when people are getting money from us and we're giving things away, and they don't support our police who are under attack day in and day out. You see what happened in North Carolina? These are the guys that are out there taking care of the things that we fear. Anyone else?
None. This guy's not ready. He already spoke.
So you're finished. You're finished. You're already at your time.
I, I just wanted...
You're finished. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. Nobody special, but I am here. We need to hang a sign on that railing over there that is not a footstool. It's probably a hundred and fifty years old. Uh, getting started. Uh, people should be copiously awarded for cleanup projects, especially if it's at the hands of the ci- citizens and they're donating their time. Try and keep track of it and give them a little plaque or a reward, and there's nothing wrong with that at all. Uh, now, the landfill, once again, we better jump on that wet shake problem because they're looking to pollute the hell out of the Lack, or, uh, the, the Naught Gorge. Uh, and, uh, the utility bills, I don't know if you had a chance to check that, Mr. King, but, uh, I have an utility bill where the delivery service exceeds what I use. And I hope that's not for the whole summer because then I'm out a couple hundred dollars. Uh, it seems like, uh, they've dumped so much on these different bills and insurance and utility and, of course, uh, it's all the essentials. That's what's causing the problem, and that's why people at the bottom are, uh, so fired up. And, uh, by the way, uh, I don't believe in fixed income arguments. I asked the boss for a raise back in, I think it was eighty-six. And you know what he asked me? Isn't your wife working? I mean, give me a break. I quit the job shortly thereafter. I mean, it's just disgusting. Uh, now, uh, I have started talking about a news article here last week. And it's here, it's there, it's everywhere. As far as I know, we don't have a Planned Parenthood agency in town, but before a doctor takes care of a woman in the middle of a crisis with, say like, uh, um, anything to do with pregnancy, uh, miscarriage or whatever, he has to call his lawyer. And these hospitals have teams of lawyers that will not let them work until it's critical. I mean, there's no hope in a case of a miscarriage, and, uh, our Supreme Court seems to think that they should, uh, turn, uh, contraception back to the states on top of it. What kind of idiot does, wants to have a, a woman, a young woman that doesn't have the price of yesterday's paper, uh, pregnant, just laid off? You know, we had protesters down there thanks to our 501(c)(3)'s. And if they wanna stick their nose that far in this society, that's great. But then individually, they should be taxed. Not everybody, but it's time to pay taxes. If I wanna give any of you people twenty dollars, there was a time when I had to earn thirty, cause my tax rate was thirty percent. I had to earn thirty bucks just to hand you twenty. And, uh, they take their money in and whatever they have, or get their little groups going, and they're a great machine. But these women are, are really hours away from even possibly dying. And it... And it destroys their organs. It's ungodly to think that somebody could be that stupid to think that something like this is okay. It's not. It's not, and we have to do better. And some people just don't care. They just want to create a crisis in people's lives to make them miserable. Thank you and have a good night.
Good evening. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I don't know where to start. We sit here week after week, and we have residents pour our hearts out on things that are a concern to us. Recently, we had the people here that were concerned about the homelessness. I went to a seminar at the University of Scranton on the homelessness situation here in Scranton. It was very informative. So we have the issue of homelessness. We have the issue of gang violence. And as I said, and I think, when are we, as the citizens of Scranton, going to be given an update? How do we find out how the city is doing with the... And what are they doing to help us with this situation? As a person spoke here earlier about the situation over in Southside, we have two different things. We have domestic violence, which I'm not sure the Police Department can really do anything about domestic violence. But as far as the gang situation, yes, we can help, we can do, and we must do something. We cannot shelter ourselves and go into our homes and say that we're going to just turn the streets over to the gang members. We have to be active. We have to get out there. We have to help. But I still don't know how and where to help. I still don't know, and I'm not sure maybe citizens know exactly the advancement that's being made. I did read the posts that the school district put up that they're concerned and they want the police protection for the students at West Scranton High School and for the Memorial Stadium area. Is that how we're going to learn what's going on in the city as to what's a concern as far as the gang violence is concerned? I just feel that we, as citizens of Scranton, should get some kind of an update, at least monthly, as to what's going on. Are there meetings being held? Is any advancement being made at all? I'm not sure how the rules behind getting a gun. If someone was to say to me right now, "Norma Jeffries, go out and buy a gun," I don't even know where to start. So, you know, what are the rules? Are the rules being broken as these individuals go out and buy guns? I don't know. Because, like I said, I wouldn't even begin to know how to go and buy a gun. But I just think that we need to know more about that. And of course, when Tom Coyne was up here talking about the papers that he found out there, my HR hat went on. I think you all know that I was an HR generalist. I was, you know, I did all kinds of things in HR. So my HR hat went on as I heard that, and I thought, "Oh, wow. Sensitive data that's out there." You know, that's one of the things that you, as an HR person, should take very, very seriously when you're dealing with someone's personal information. So I'm not sure, whoever did it doesn't really matter. What matters is, is the city going to take those names and get their names and their individual information protected? Are they going to be given Experian or whoever the credit bureaus are out there to watch their credit history over this next? I know that's what we get. When... I think the last one I got was Discovery Card. I think their database was jeopardized. And I got, you know, something in the mail saying that they were going to watch my credit or something. But something needs to be done, you know? And I'm not sure... I think each one of you individually have a responsibility and oversee... You oversee the different functions of the city. I'm not sure which one of you oversee the administration, but I think that they need to be watched. The first thing I thought was, I do have the handbook, and I thought, "Hmm, let me go scan that handbook and see just what is in there." When someone violates things in that handbook, that they should be suspended? Is that what the handbook says? I'm not sure. But I will be looking at the handbook just to see what it says. And I'm just hoping going forward that we, the citizens of Scranton, can get an update. I won't even mention the street signs, like $330,000 that's out there. I just hope it's not going for something, and I don't see... And not just me. I don't like to say "I." It's the citizens of Scranton to see an improvement in our street signs. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Anyone else?
Mr. Boldenberg, can we reach out to the HR Department and the business administrator just to see? I mean, we don't need any names of individuals that were involved here, but what actions have been taken to protect our employees' identities? If we can get some kind of update from HR or the administration as to what actions have been taken since incident has occurred?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Mike Mancini, resident city of Scranton. Happened yet again. Every single week I come up here, I talk about safety, the importance of safety, getting to know our neighbors again, and understanding what's ahead of us with a railway system in the not-so-distant future. As we move ahead, we have to strive to put ourselves in the right direction. As one person, I identified a problem, and that was canines. You know, we were supposed to have four that could hit on drugs and guns, and we're going to be down to one. Come Thursday, I'm going to be meeting with Chief Carroll, along with Shadow Romano and Ed Adams, the breeder and trainer. Hopefully, he accepts honor and justice that were named by Mary Wilding. What great names. We're hoping for a third. I'd like to name that Gil after Detective Gil Martin. These are tough animals. They are strong, just like our police officers. They will complement each other. One thing we have to do is we have to compliment the Police Department because they're short-staffed. All right? Incidents like this happen far too often. Frequency is out of control. The type of calls that we get become more severe. These are just the ones that we hear about. As a citizen here in the city of Scranton, growing up in West Scranton, you know, you grow up strong. You grow up with your convictions, and you become a better person. You know, other kids toughen you up. I have never, in my years, expected to see anything remotely close to this. Four people died the last four months, you know? And I have to look at it from the other side of it because there's people that have been impacted on a daily basis, losing a family member. We almost lost a police officer. I heard those shots. Thirteen, fourteen, in a matter of four or five seconds, not knowing. First one to pray, first one to call 911. Thank God that prayers do work. It's the first one to pray throughout the region in a return. We have the bravest police officer on our Police Department. We have many others that you don't even know, just like Detective Gil Martin, ready to knuckle up on a daily basis for our city. I want to thank Mr. Rains for this sign. Signs are one thing. Signs are changing. Calls are changing. We need the change. We need to knuckle up as citizens, and we need to take our streets back. In the Hill section, I would hope that you get a hold of Mr. Rains. Let him be your point person. He's got a great amount of experience. And speaking with Senator Flynn, once we get West Grant up and running, I'm assured by him that he will do whatever he can to help our community, help West Grant, other communities just like that Hill section. Green Ridge, North Scranton, Southside, Westside, the five families. We've been here forever. These gangs have been here since what? I think, what, 2008 was the first sign of it? And over the years, it's just gotten worse. Well, it's about time that we knuckle up and we fight against this. You know, I would hope that the mayor would have addressed this issue by now. Remaining quiet doesn't make the problem go away. You know, now is the time where you need a leader to step forward, and I don't think we really have that. Procrastination page has done nothing for us. Instead of rectifying the situation, we as citizens get rectified on a daily basis. When you have somebody from out of town with out-of-town money, you get out-of-town problems. So this is a problem that we have to handle internally. If you want to get involved, if you want to make a difference, join the Neighborhood Crime Watch. And prayers again and thank you to the Scranton Police Department. Good evening, City Council.
Anyone else?
Let's not forget this.
Fifth order, Friday motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few comments. I'm going to ask Attorney Gil Bride if he can reach out to the city administration and ask them, number one, if they can kind of look into the situation, investigation, whatever, find out exactly what happened with the HR records. That's a pretty serious situation where you have people's HR files left out on a corner in boxes like that. So, number one, I would like that. Number two, if we could set up an executive session to discuss the situation with council in the near future. Number two, I know that we talked about having a caucus concerning the homeless situation. We were trying to coordinate with the woman. I'm just wondering where we are with that and when we could possibly jump on that issue and have a public caucus dealing with the homeless situation.
I'll look into that, Mr. King.
If you could. Also, in terms of the police, I recently had a conversation with our police chief concerning the issue of understaffing, and he indicated to me that there are actually about five to seven officers shy of a full complement. But unfortunately, there's about 20 or 22 that are on comp, which makes it, you know, a bit challenging. So they are... It's the truth. They're operating around 80%. And the comp part makes it difficult and challenging, and they're still five to seven shy of a full complement. I think it's 147 is the number. So that makes it tough. The rest of our police officers who are out there, you know, trying to fight for our safety. And as always, we appreciate what Scranton Police Department does to protect all of us in this city. Next, if I could get an update on that castle house located in the Green Ridge section. Is that on Richmond or is it...
That's correct, sir.
Which one?
Richmond.
The one on Richmond. If we can get an update, I had a citizen reach out to me today that lives near there, just wondering, I thought that most recently the judge ordered that it needed to either be sold or demolished and...
That's correct, Mr. King.
Okay. So just if we can find out, if we could reach out to Solicitor Jessica Escra, find out where we're at with that. That's been a long time. That castle house has been a battle back and forth for years. I think the neighbors deserve some resolution to that if possible. And the last thing is the Davis Trail at Naog Park. The Davis Trail, if you go from the greenhouse and travel down along, I guess it'd be the upper part of the gorge, working toward the gorge, that has completely deteriorated. I know I brought this up probably eight to 10 months ago. I'm asking to see if we could reach out to Parks and Rec and see what can be done to help remediate that situation up at the Naog Park.
I will, sir.
And I think that's all that I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few comments. First, I'd like to thank DPW on some of the recent cleanups they've been doing. I know a lot of hard work is going into that. I saw recently they were behind the car wash on, I think, 7th Ave. So it looked like a lot of debris was back in that area. Last week, we got an answer about parks as I met with some of the neighborhoods in our city that have parks within the neighborhood. They stated to me that they were concerned about the fences not being locked. We did reach out to the administration and ask about what's going to occur, and we were told that the parks, specifically Weston Field, wouldn't be locked in case emergency vehicles had to get in there. I asked if we can get a deeper dive on that, maybe looking at some of the parks specifically. I know we do have... Recently, we've hired an assistant Parks Director, so I know with our current Parks Director and his assistant, we should be able to get some kind of answer. If we could reach out to the Parks Department, Mr. Boldenberg, and see if maybe more specifically an individualized, you know, plans could be had for monitoring and keeping these parks safe after dusk.
We did include that in last week's questions, but we have yet to get an answer. But I'll follow up.
Thank you very much. The recycling calendar, if we could possibly reach out also to Recycling or Refuse and see if we're going to get a recycling calendar out as it is now May. We have May and June left on our six-month calendar, so just making sure that they're ready to go with the next six months as we move forward with the year.
I'll secure it, sir.
Thank you very much. Last week, I asked for... I actually did two things. I put in a right-to-know about pave cuts and what we're getting in receivables for pave cuts over the last few years. I know I'm waiting on a response there, and I got a response to my right-to-know saying that we didn't have adequate staffing to get me that information. But as of right now, Frank, we're not in receipt of any information on pave cuts that I requested.
We have not.
Could we ask if we have an active pave cut inspector while we're waiting on that other information?
We don't at the current time.
All right. Thank you.
But I'll find out when.
All right. Other than that, I know zoning... I've attended some of the recent zoning board meetings, and I know at those meetings, they've expressed that we may have to take a deeper dive into our recent zoning ordinance as they've been encountering some concerns that they have. So I think a conversation with them in the near future could help with some... alleviate some of that. But other than that, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have quite a few. I'll try to get through quickly. First off, just wanted to touch on some of the updates and issues with the homeless population. So Councilman Smurl and myself, we went along with Jennifer Reed, who's been here before to speak, and Wanda Dix. They have a group of, I think they've said maybe 70 people, who take different nights during the week and contribute food and different supplies for the homeless. And so we had the opportunity to go along with them to several locations where they gave out meals to the homeless and then offered many different supplies to be able to help them. And we had some great conversations with them about what some of the more immediate needs or concerns were, and if there was anything that we could address at least immediately for them. So we're going to continue to do that. I plan on going out with them again this week and, you know, doing whatever we can on our end to help. And in addition to that, the Unsheltered Task Force that the city has, I requested to be a part of that committee, and I'll provide updates through council based on that. They're going to have a meeting in a few weeks. I believe May 17th is the next date for a meeting that they're holding. And the NEPA Youth Homeless Shelter, they had a fundraiser on Friday at Voodoo that I attended, and it was very well-attended. And it was great to see a lot of support for their organization and what they're doing. And Andrew Cotillo wasn't too bad on... And Andrew Cotillo wasn't too bad on the guitar either. We enjoyed listening to his music. And let's see here. Mr. Raines had come again, and I appreciate you coming. And I try not to respond and take up time during citizens' participation. So just wanted to respond here. And I know that Councilman King had brought up the email that we received and the latest updates. But originally, I think they said they were going to try to get to it in the fall of 2023, but it might get pushed to 2024, and it depended on funding. And I think it's been like the same story. So then I didn't see it on the list that we received maybe a couple of months ago from them. And I said, what's happening? Why is it not on the spring list for Pennsylvania American Water? And it was, they said, oh, this is for 2025. And I said, no, it's not. This is, this needs to happen. So we've been working with them and pushing them to make sure that it gets done. And, you know, latest we heard was May. So we're going to continue to stay on top of them, make sure that this gets done because they have to do their side of it first, their work, before D P W can then do the rest of it. So we'll make sure we keep our end of the bargain here and get the road worked on. I know you've heard it before, and you've been waiting, waiting, waiting. It's the same situation with some of the other streets. So there is another street that I took note of that we'd received a complaint about quite a while ago. And, you know, we were trying to get on the D P W list, and then American Water said, no, this is going to be a project of ours. And I thought it was supposed to be this year, and now that's another one that was pushed to next year. And that's 600 block of North Webster. So we're trying our best, but continue to bring these streets to our attention so that we can, that we can work to get them done as soon as possible. And we received a complaint about Vine and Clay, a property on the corner there, that was sent over to S P D and Code Enforcement. There were parties being held there, and it was like an unoccupied residence. And I think University of Scranton students might have been using that to their advantage. So, you know, they said that they would visit the property. I did request a further update on that if they did find that there are parties going on or, you know, what's going on with the property at this point. So once I receive an update, I'll provide that. I also requested an update on, along the 400 block of Prescott Avenue, there's a property that had a fire that was supposed to be demolished. At first, it was going to be renovated, then it was going on the demo list. So didn't hear anything back on that. If we could check in again on that, Mr. Boldenberg?
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And another property that is on the demo list, but some of the neighbors are patiently awaiting that to occur, is on Cottage Avenue. So we know that, I've brought that property up many, many times. So just want to see if maybe there's a date for that demolition. They just want to make sure that it's actually happening.
That's correct. 1068 Cottage is finally on the list, so I'll get a date.
Okay, excellent. And I did, I believe, last week, I requested an update on issues of gun violence and gang activity within the city and was hoping that Chief Carroll would be able to come in for a caucus. I've also arranged a meeting with him to get a further update and, you know, hopefully get a date for him to be able to come in and have more of a discussion of where we're at with that, at least from the S P D perspective, and what we could do further. That is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandrick, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, I got a couple. So I took a quick look at the code with regard to littering and fines. All right? So, and there's a couple of different levels when it comes to fines for littering, I guess. You know, if you just throw something on the street, it's 50 bucks. If you throw something from a vehicle, it could be up to 100. And illegal dumping is 300. Maybe that's what resonated with me. But there's fines, they're on the website. If you're not sure, you know, where to look, just take a look at the code. Secondly, so I agree with Mrs. Jeffries and Mr. Coyne. You know, the issue is related to identity theft. Somebody has to be held responsible for this. We're all responsible for our everyday lives and at work. We all work, wherever we work, we're responsible. And this, this isn't a good one. These documents laid out there for hours, whether, and it doesn't matter whether they're current or former employees, their identity, their information should be protected. So like, and I also concur with my two councilmen to the right of me, something has to be done to protect these people. It should have started already. It shouldn't take this forum to get something started in H R to protect these employees' identities or social security numbers or any other pertinent information that could be out there now. So, you know, I don't hear, I really don't want to hear, well, we're looking into whatever. I don't want to hear that. I hope it started already. I hope these, because the files came back, they were brought back, hopefully all of them were brought back to this building. Who knows? They were sitting out there for a couple of hours. But the files that were brought back and the files of the persons that were in that box, I hope that H R's already started something to protect these employees' past or present information. I'd be very disappointed if nothing has started yet. Secondly, so, oh, maybe a month ago, I brought up, and actually a couple speakers brought up, a very unsafe situation on 12th Avenue, 511, 513, 12th Avenue. There's a huge hole in the ground, and I mean huge. I mean, I could get in it. And I'm not the smallest guy in the room, right? So, and we wanted to determine either from Code Enforcement or the water company, who's responsible for this hole? And I guess it has, what has been determined that it's the resident that lives at this property, right? So, and that was March 27th, a work, a stop work order was put on this property. And they had 30 days, you know, and they were fined 100 bucks, okay? And 30 days to rectify this. So guess what? I drove by it today, and I talked to a couple of people over the weekend, then actually come up to me, said, Mark, that hole's still there. So, and it's right up the side street that we call West Side Hill near the school when I was growing up. And this hole, when I tell you, it's huge and deep. Just think about by accident, something falling in the hole, or, you know, two kids on their way home from school, you know how kids can be maybe pushing each other or screwing around, someone gets in that hole and gets hurt. Who's responsible? I'm starting to feel responsible because I brought this up three times, right? So can you please reach out to Code Enforcement? You know, it's past the 30 days, obviously, or very close to it, to see what action's been taken. Fill the hole, you know? Even if D P W has to fill the hole, I'm okay with that. Maybe it's not protocol, but this is a very unsafe situation that needs to be rectified. And I don't want to hear, oh, we gave another fine, and it's another 30 days. That's unacceptable. Because the fines say it will continue to increase daily and may reach 2,000. I doubt that happened. So this has to be, the hole has to be filled by somebody or some entity. All right, so also, you know, I brought this subject up months ago, and it's regarding people doing construction work without permits on the weekend. And we're told that that's the way to go. No one bothers you. You want to get a roof on? Have it put on the weekend. You want gutters? Have them done on the weekend. You don't need a permit, no one's watching. So that was a concern. And you know what? And I actually drove around and saw this happening, and I brought it up at a meeting, and I think the response was, well, we're looking into that. Might be a contractual issue, but guess what? It continues. We're losing revenue, number one. We don't know how safe these operators are that are putting roofs on or gutters on or doing construction. So I always, I hate to have to, can we please revisit this with Code Enforcement or Administration? Get an update as what, you know, what? We never got an update. So let's see if they're still looking into it, because these people are breaking a law.
Mr. McCandrick, maybe we can recommend if one of the Code Enforcement can alternate weekends so that we get some people working on a weekend.
Well, a rotated schedule, I don't care. It's not, you know, they were supposed to figure that out and haven't by now, obviously, because we didn't get a, and, you know, that's a great idea, Mr. King. But, you know, maybe some people want to get some overtime. And it's justified if they're going to, you know, get revenue from, God bless, revenue from this. But, you know, it continues. So, and so if it continues, it's still a problem, and the problem hasn't been fixed. So please, let's, you know, get some information on that or a final answer on that.
I will, sir.
Thank you. And then residents up on the East Mountain reached out to me over the weekend. There were some issues with water pressure. It dropped considerably over the weekend. There was a broken main, pipe separation, leaking hydrant, et cetera. Normally, I, I don't know about all of you, but I can alert if there's an issue like that in my neighborhood or my address. And I appreciate it. But I guess the residents up there have not. And, you know, they even spoke to a firefighter who was at Garrity's up in that area, and they're like, you know, we'd have an issue with a fire with this pressure not knowing and not being alerted by. So, you know, and this resident is right, you know, our water bills and our sewer bills are ridiculously high. They're trying to do an increase, and, you know, they should have been notified, one, all right? And number two, they said they don't, there's no number to reach anybody locally anymore. So could we just reach out? I know we've been in contact with the water company as they're working over, or working downtown, and they've been very responsive to, you know, inquiries and updates with the work being done downtown. Could, whoever you spoke to with regards to that, could you reach out to them and say, you know, we got a section of the city, maybe it's not getting the alerts that they're supposed to. Is there a number, a reachable number for residents or actually customers? So instead of kind of being there in limbo when the situation arises?
I'll reach out in the morning, sir.
Thank you. And I think, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrick. I just have a few for requests for abandoned vehicles and stuff on Orchard Street. That has all been turned in. And also 1400 block of Pittston Avenue, there's a house with loose shingles blowing across the neighborhood into the yards, and also on that block, garbage and neighbors claim rodents have been seen in the yards. As for the skid steer at Naog Park, the skid steer belongs to Recreation Authority. It was given to them, I don't know, many years ago by the D P W. It is over 30 years old, therefore unusable by the D P W. The maintenance is paid for by the Recreation Authority, as is all of the equipment that is at the Naog Park and the Rec Authority Garage. That is all maintained by the Recreation Authority, not the city. I did last year or the year before do testing and gave the city and the Recreation Authority the certification that I passed for the examination on that equipment, and I also supplied them with the liability insurance for me to operate it. So hopefully, that's the end of that. Mr. Boldenberg?
5B for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Chaluski Enterprises to perform construction services for the Robinson Park project.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution, accepting the recommendation of the Historic Architectural Review Board and denying the certificate of appropriateness for demolition of the carriage house at 336 Moore Court.
At this time, I entertain a motion, item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to move item 5C to seventh order for a final vote.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a municipal Main Street Organization Cooperation Agreement between the City of Scranton and Scranton tomorrow in order to receive funds for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Economic and Community Development to assist with downtown revitalization.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to move item 5D to seventh order for a final vote.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution, accepting the recommendation of the Scranton City Planning Commission and appointing Joseph G. Price Esquire to be the solicitor of said commission.
So moved.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, formerly 5C, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 34, 2024, accepting the recommendation of the Historic Architectural Review Board and denying the certificate of appropriateness for demolition of the carriage house at 336 Moore Court.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final vote of item 7A.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, just to be clear, if we're to vote yes to this, we're attempting to save the property at 336 Moore Court.
We're trying, we're going to say that yes.
Yes, Mr. Schuster. A yes vote signifies that you are agreeing with the decision of the Historic Architectural Review Board.
Correct. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
On the, go ahead. Well, on the question, so we had a discussion in caucus about this building, and, you know, I'm a lover of old historical buildings. I have a house that's 100 years old, and I love it. But after speaking with our solicitor and fellow council people, we've kind of, at least I've come to my own conclusion based on, you know, discussion we had, that this building is not safe. And to the effect where it could really seriously hurt someone. So with that said, if I vote yes to have this building still stand and someone gets hurt, I don't want to be that guy. It doesn't look like this building's going to be rehabilitated or remodeled, or it's just a building or that is not going to, you know, it was inspected by some people. So with that said, you know, I'm the chairman of public safety. How can I, you know, in good conscience, vote to have a structure stay or stand that's unsafe and it's not going to be, you know, made safer in the near future? So that's why I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrick. Anyone else?
Also on the question, we have a building here from the 1890s. It's coming to us late. It's coming through fifth order right to seventh order. I would have liked to have a longer opportunity to address the situation, to take a look at the building. I have not taken a look at this particular building. You know, we really haven't had a chance to see any group step forward to say, you know, there's any ideas out there for revitalization. I'm going to be voting yes to agree with the hard board tonight. And that's my opinion as to what we should do with this structure. I would have liked a little bit more time to digest what has occurred, but I feel like it's been rushed through.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Anyone else?
On the question, well, I am currently working in school construction. I'm not an architect and I'm not an engineer. I do have a decent set of eyes thanks to these glasses. When I drive down Mulberry Street and I sit at that red light and I take a look at the left side of that roof next to the dormer, I see a roof that is sagging and looks like it's in serious jeopardy of collapsing, especially with the type of snow and the weight of the heavy snow that we get in this area. I don't.
heavy snow that we get in this area. I don't, I'm always one for trying to save, you know, buildings of great architectural value. But unfortunately, it doesn't appear as though there's going to be any attempt to try to rehabilitate this building. And if they were to try to rehabilitate this building, the cost would be, I think, astronomical to repair, because we're actually talking about I-beams and structure reinforcement. So therefore, I will be voting no this evening.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else?
On the question, I also would have liked more time on this piece of legislation rather than rushing it. But, and I also would have liked to see, you know, if there was an inspection done and what the results were of that inspection. I also don't know what I would be looking for. I did, you know, pass by the, the structure, also where that hasn't been used for quite some time, other than for storage. Doesn't seem that there is a use for the university for it in the future. I do appreciate the Harb and what they do to protect buildings and structures within Scranton and downtown. But on this one, I do feel that, you know, that maybe the denial was not what I would have approved. So I would be voting no.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. I also, the reason this was rushed and pushed through is there was a lot of confusion when the university took down the front building, the more modern building. And then it came back to evidently Law Department, and then it sat there for a while. I don't know what happened, but I heard that the university had called them back and said, we're still waiting for the back building. So that is why this is being pushed through. And we only have 45 days to bring this up and vote on it. Otherwise, we lose if we choose to go a different way. And I also looked at the building. There are a lot of deficiencies in the building, and I believe it should be raised. Roll call, please.
Oh, sorry. One last thing before we move on. And Attorney Gobright, you may know this offhand, you may not. Is there any, anything in the process here for us to push this back to the Harb Board? I understand that once 45 days passes, their decision is final. But is there any type of appeals process or something that we could push it back through to see if they've had a different opinion?
A majority yes vote today or no action at all means that you accept the findings of the Historical Board.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
No.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Mr. Smurl?
No. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
Mr. Smurl, that was not adopted.
I'm sorry.
It failed to, it failed.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion has failed.
7B, formerly 5D, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, resolution number 35, 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a municipal Main Street Organization Cooperation Agreement between the City of Scranton and Scranton tomorrow in order to receive funds from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Economic and Community Development to assist with downtown revitalization.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, filed to council on number 14, 2024.
This ordinance converts a certain portion of Deacon Street from a one-way to a two-way street. Council is awaiting a recommendation, which we had received today. So I believe we are going to take this from the table for our next meeting. If there are no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.